The meeting will come to order. There is one commissioner who is not here at the meeting today, which is Mark Cochrane. Can I have an approval of minutes?
One minute.
Of the last meeting?
Second.
Second. Thank you. And Kathy, do you have an update for us?
Yes, the city council has directed us to go out with a survey regarding City Hall and Civic Center. This is an outgrowth of the meeting, the council workshop that was held on December 2nd, which this room was very well filled. I think we had forty-some-odd people who came down and gave their opinions as to potential options for City Hall, for locations. And so council has released a survey. You will be getting a postcard in the mail. It's on the city's website. It will be up and running probably within a day or two. And you can just go and take it online. You can also use your smartphone or iPad and tablets. It's accessible from that. And if anybody does not have access to Internet to take the survey, to call City Hall, and we have hard copies available for them. So we hope that we hear from the community on what they're looking for in a civic center.
Is this survey designed for Kathy?
No, no, this is very, very early stages. This is purely about what should it be, what could be in there, what are your priorities? Do you agree with the preferences that the workshop participants prioritized? And what are your other thoughts? I imagine if and when a site is selected, the process will go through and, you know, it will have design review and all of that.
This is a long process.
This is a long process, yes. But it is moving.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
So can we move into item number one?
We have to ask if there is any items, if you received any speaker slips from anyone for an item not on the agenda. Anything for oral communication?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Then we do move to item number one, which is a general plan conformance finding for a piece of property known as APN 20102436 on Hidden Pines Road. And I want to show you in the first slide here, the location of the property is within the red lines, Hidden Pine Road on the upper or north side. It is a long parcel in between existing parcels here. I know we'll be hearing from a number of the public who border this parcel. It is a parcel that has been, it was mapped in the subdivision map of 1947, and that was when Torrey Pines Terrace was subdivided. And so it has been a legal lot since it was defined in 1947. It was set for a water pump site in order to have a pump station. That pump station was never built by the city, but it could have been. Instead, it remained vacant. The underlying zoning has always been R-110, and so that is our single-family, low-density residential development zone. The parcel itself is approximately 3,200 square feet, 3,170 square feet, and it is 25 feet wide by 127 feet long. As I said, it is a legal lot, and this is a picture of what it looks like now with vegetation. It would have development rights as a single-family parcel based on the zoning. Within the lot, if you were to look at the standard setbacks for the R-110, there is approximately 820 square feet of buildable lot area when we apply all the various setbacks. It has the minimum required 20-foot square, excuse me, 20-foot street frontage along Hidden Pines. If you were to look at the zoning code, the FAR would allow up to 2,000 square feet because it is legally non-conforming to the standard size of the lots. R-110 is a 10,000-square-foot lot designation, but looking throughout the city in the R-110, about 30% of, or 33%, a third of the R-110 lots are substandard, are below the 10,000. That's what happens when you are subdivided in 1947 and your zoning code comes about in the '70s. Tonight, we are actually here for a very limited authority. And I know there may be people in the community who are interested in additional discussions. However, planning commission's purview is very straightforward. It is the city council's discussions and decisions that authorize any disposal of city property, and that's per government code, section 37350. In section 37420, the government code also describes process of which the city conducted in that they held a protest hearing, they considered the protests, and then they approved a resolution with an intent to sell. The government code also has a role for the planning commission in this same process, and that's described in code section 65402. And the role for the planning commission is to determine that this property is in conformance with the underlying community plan designation. So that is the one and only action that is before the planning commission tonight. On May 20th, council adopted a resolution directing that they would explore the sale of the city-owned property and then asked that planning commission make their determination of the conformance with the community plan. At the same time, they also asked that appraisal be undertaken and a title search be undertaken. Both these are underway. And then council is the one that makes a decision on how they determine value, how they set the direction on a method of sale if and when they decide to dispose the property. So I know that may be confusing to a number of people. It's slightly convoluted, but that is how the government code outlines our various different responsibilities. So tonight, for the planning commission, your only determination is if this property is in conformance with the underlying low-density residential designation that is in the community plan. Low-density residential was assigned to this area in the 1976 general plan, and what followed from that was the R-110 zoning designation that applies to all of the areas that were designated as low-density residential. The zoning code is, as you probably well know, the implementing ordinance for the community plan. The sale, if the city council does decide to go forward and sell it, would not result in any change to the community plan or the zoning designation, and the allowed use would be the low-density, single-family residential. So tonight, what is before you in the resolution is to make a determination that the sale of the Hidden Pines property for the intended use as single-family residential development is in conformance with the adopted community plan, and that is stated in resolution in Exhibit A. And so with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
So for this evening, I think it would be a good idea if we heard from the community first and then have our discussion. Does that sound good?
That's good.
So I will open it now to the general public. We have a number of speaking slips. The first one is Linda Deftos.
Kathy, do you want to explain to the limitations of the voting?
Do we have a policy that we have a three-minute?
Oh, and that's right, I'm working the, thank you. Where you all have three minutes of time. The yellow light goes on. It will be a green light when you start, and you'll state your name and address for the record. Then, when you have 30 seconds left, it will wrap up with an orange light, excuse me, that's at the last minute, and then it will turn red when you've used your three minutes. So you can use that little light system there to judge your time. All right?
Okay. I'm Linda Deftos, and I live at 225 Torrey Pines Terrace. My house was completed in October of '74, so went through, you know, the design review process, you know, starting in, you know, like April of '74. I'm very concerned about, you know, this particular lot. I remember years ago, and I guess Lou Dominie's still there, but Lou Dominie building what most of us know as the ship house on the little lot at, I don't know, 25th Street or wherever that is, where the stop sign is on 101. And I've actually been in the house because there was a property being developed, you know, below me, and he was the architect for that property at the time. You know, that owner, you know, sold the property and never did develop that plan. But anyway, so I'm very concerned that, A, it will change, selling that property and having somebody build another house in that tiny little spot will change the character of the neighborhood and the density of, you know, the neighborhood. I've been there for a long time. This seems to me as if the trend these days is to build what I call monuments to egos, build as much as you can, you know, much square footage as you can get away with with using pop-outs and all sorts of little tricks of, you know, design. In order to do that, when my house was built, the idea was to have your house blend in with the natural environment, and that doesn't seem to be, for the last 15 or 20 years, that doesn't seem to have been what it is. And I'm sure money is driving this. You know, somebody pays a lot of money for a piece of property. I understand the city wanting to sell properties that they didn't use, don't use, but I'm very concerned about a property being built on, which to me is a substandard lot. I guess it's, you know, you call it, it's, the city calls it a legal lot, but to me, it's a tiny, tiny little lot. That's my concern. So I, you know, I would want, I would want, you know, huge restrictions if they decide to do it, huge restrictions on what can be, can be done there. You know, if somebody, one of the neighbors, because I know one of the, you know, neighbor's building expressed an interest in it, I certainly wouldn't want that to allow that person to increase the size of their house. You know, maybe there would be the idea of having a little bit more space, open space, you know, air and freedom in the area.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, if this lot was privately owned, would this be before us right now?
We wouldn't have to be making a conformance finding because...
They would be capable of selling it at any time they want.
Correct.
The lot would be solvable, and the R-110 issue would not be discussed.
No, it's not, the underlying zoning is R-110.
So this is only coming up because it's disposable city property.
Because it's in the city property, correct.
Thank you.
Clive Freeman.
Move it forward.
Thank you very much indeed, Kathy. So I'm Clive Freeman from 301 Hidden Pines Road, and I'd like to thank everybody here, particularly the commissioners, for all of their great work in organizing the development within our community. You do a fantastic job. I'm not in favor of this being considered to be in conformance with the general plan, and I've tried to set out the reasons for that here. The site was designed and intended as a pump station. It was never intended to be a dwelling. It's way below in size what would be suitable for constructing a dwelling, particularly in the area that we're in, which is a low-density area. The kind of effective FAR of that area, if anything was to be constructed there at the 2,000-square-foot level, would be 63%. It would be almost three times higher than the target FAR for the low-density area. So that's, I think, you know, bordering on the absurd, and we really oughtn't to be doing that. There'd also be, because of that, a significant loss of natural habitat in a wildland urban interface area. So that's a very important area because we've got the ecological beauty and resources of Torrey Pines, and you can't just have a cutoff between urban development and a unique area like that, which is completely unique to the nation. You have to have a buffer zone where the flora and fauna can kind of adjust themselves to the greater reaches of society. And if we start to fill up that buffer zone, we're going to remove, we're going to basically encroach on that natural resource. And that's the last little bit of that resource on the surface of the planet. So that's really something that we should take a very serious look at if we want to kind of do away with the intent and spirit of the buffer zone. The development also raises significant privacy issues because of the slope of the land, and you'll see a picture which illustrates that in a second. It raises significant light and fire issues, which again are important in a wildland urban interface zone. And development could cause substantial planning and design issues because the entire neighborhood has been constructed around the concept that was a pump site and nothing more. And so everything's been laid out in balance to that. And as soon as you perturb that, you obviously do raise the value of that particular piece of land, but you also depreciate everything around it, and all the planning work that's gone into everything around it will be done away with. And I really think that's not in the spirit of the low-density zone that we're in. I'm not doing well for time here, but I briefly mentioned that the original meeting that put this process in action was certainly described in the report that preceded it, that no, sorry, the variances would be required for any conceivable development. That was the wording in that report. And subsequently, it's emerged in discussion with the city attorney that actually development could occur without variances, as we just heard, and quite substantial development. So I think that sort of causes us to doubt the, actually getting the ball rolling here. And I think that's important to be considered in these circumstances. So adverse impacts are way beyond anything that would normally happen with the development of a lot. So, you know, if we set a precedent like that, we've really got to think about that very carefully, and I think maybe wider consultation with the community is in order rather than just setting a ball in motion like that. And so it sets an extraordinary precedent, so we should really hesitate before setting a precedent. You know, our laws are constructed by precedents, and as soon as we bend the precedents, then we're basically determining what the future laws would be. It's a loss of the natural habitat which we ought to fight against, fight against as a community. And we're responsible not only for cash reserves, which I completely understand are very important, but we're also responsible for natural reserves and ecological reserves. And we need to balance the two. It's hard to do because they're different units. But as a society, we can, I think, maximize both and come to a good balance between the two. And so I would not set it all the way over to doing maximization of the cash value. Let's do something which is more balanced than that approach. So for those reasons, I'd say let's oppose saying that this is inconformant with the general plan for Delmar City. Thank you very much.
Are you concerned because of the lot size or the location? What caused, I mean, if the lot was four times the size...
If the lot was four times the size, I mean, the topology is very strange. It's very narrow, as is shown here, and yet you do get an 800-foot pad if you want to without bending any of the setbacks. So if you do something highly creative, you'll end up with a structure which is completely out of character with the entire area, in addition to destroying the basic natural vegetation and wildlife that you have there. There's a Torrey Pine on that strip of land, for example. So here's a quick sketch of what you could do, just superimposed on a view looking north. And you can see the different residences here. This is the Story Poles for the Van Ruin residents. This is the Freed residence. They're already relatively close together. Here, we're inserting 2,000 square feet. Additionally, as Linda was saying, things in the past have been set out to be compatible with the landscape. In that case, you can get away without variances, constructing a kind of tower radiator-like object, and you potentially could do something quite creative and artistic, but it would be very different to, and very incompatible with the landscape, and very incompatible with a wildland urban interface.
So you're concerned about because of the size causes this concern?
Yeah, size is a concern, yes.
I think so.
Amongst other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Zara Freeman?
Hi, my name is Zara Freeman, and I live at 301 Hidden Pines Road. I support whatever Clive said just now, and I believe the sale of the pump site lot for development is not compatible to the community's general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Burke?
Okay, my name is Gary Burke. I live at 248 Torrey Pines Terrace, directly to the south of this sliver of land that's being considered to be within the general plan. And my question would be to the commission here, if that, say that lot was only 15, or say it was 18-foot wide instead of 25-foot wide. Now granted, 3,000 square feet is enough to build a house, assuming the setbacks and the shape of it was right. But I don't think it conforms to any general plan with the, if it was only, say it was only 18 feet wide, but it was, instead of 270 feet long, it was 1,000 feet long, would it fit into the plan because it had 3,000 square feet? I think you'd have to say no. I think it's so far fetched to say that that's a buildable lot in this neighborhood that you should deny considering it in the plan. And for that reason, I'm opposed to the, to the hearing tonight on whether it conforms. So, thank you.
Kenneth Casper?
Good evening. I'd like to concur with the other speakers tonight, especially Clive. He's so eloquent when he speaks.
If you could state your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ken Casper, and you called me up. Ken Casper, I live at 339 Hidden Pines Road, which is a house which is probably most affected by any building in that area. The Van Ruins have been especially helpful in trying to establish community rapport. They've worked with us, they've worked with other neighbors. I'm sure they're trying to work things out. There were some changes, and we're happy with it. They're wonderful additions to the neighborhood. That parcel that they're building on, the way they've designed it with Dean Meredith, it's going to be fantastic. We looked at the plans, we're 100% behind them. We even had some issues with privacy. We talked to the architect, and he said, "We'll do this and that." They're just, they've been wonderful. And what we want to do is support the Van Ruins in purchasing this property to increase the open space. I'm a real estate broker by trade. Okay, if you're going to evaluate it as a property that you can build on, the new owners are going to have a heck of a time getting this through the DRB because it's going to get ping-pong back and forth. If you try to build on that narrow strip of land, it's going to be out of, out of character with the neighborhood, and it's going to be a bit of an abortion compared to what other homes are that have been designed. The Van Ruins home is absolutely going to be beautiful. And then you try to put something next to his that's tiny, it's just going to offset the neighborhood. We'll oppose any kind of home that goes in there because it's not going to be a part of the neighborhood. And I'm sure you've had enough speakers here that you will spend more money in DRB time and employee time going back and forth, ping-ponging, trying to build a home in that strip of land than you will by trying to increase its use and value by trying to make it a buildable lot. It's just naturally set up as a open space. I believe the integrity of the Van Ruins, if they were to buy this at reasonable price, they would keep it open for all of us to enjoy. It wouldn't block anybody's view. It would be a quarter for wildlife. And my wife and I, Leslie Casper, we both support the Van Ruins, and we urge that the planning commission consider it as an addition to the Van Ruins property so that they can, to keep it in a natural state. Clive would love to have it as a natural state. We'd love to have it as a natural state, and it would be perfect. As far as valuation, that's, you know, there's different ways of doing that, to evaluate it on a proper basis so that the city gets enough money that it makes sense to them to sell, and yet our community would benefit by having that, that land within Peter Van Ruin's control. Thank you, I appreciate it, and you guys do a great job. Appreciate it, let me speak.
Thank you. Bob Freed?
Bob Freed, 264 Torrey Pines Terrace, and I live in this house. And when I bought 10 years ago, just want a few points. First point is, it was represented to us as an unbuildable site, I believe, by people from the city, from Delmar. And it certainly appeared, we knew it was owned by the city, but it, you know, was a pump site. It's very thin. We never expected it to be a buildable lot. And I think the most important factor to take into consideration here is the fact that at 25-foot wide, if there was any setback of, for example, seven and a half, if you consider this, it's almost like you're considering automatically providing variances because 25-foot wide, seven and a half foot on the side gives you an 11-foot structure, which kind of sounds ridiculous to me. And the, also important, as a few of the speakers have spoken, said this, that in any design review board, you're going to have to take into consideration bulk and mass, privacy. This just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense for the Van Royans, who've been trying and been very collaborative with the whole community. It doesn't make any sense to have a structure overlooking, overwhelming the Freemans' residents, exactly behind the Burks. It just, it was never conceived that way. There's a real privacy issue, there's a view issue for all the people. And I'm a bit surprised that, that the staff has even, has, you know, looked at this and recommended it. So I would suggest that you really have to not consider this a buildable lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Ruin?
Yeah, so Peter Van Royen, obviously live over there. I just want to say thank you to all the neighbors also that came out. Yeah, clearly, we oppose this also as a buildable site, and I just want to state for the record, I've stated it before, that we would like to purchase this land and integrate the land with our lot, and worked with Clive and Gary. And the understanding that we have is that we will not increase our FAR if we have that property, or if we buy that property. And in addition to that, we will incorporate this city lot together with ours to make it one area to prevent this discussion again in the future, that somebody can buy this land and build a structure on there that's, you know, quite frankly, not really very, very good for the community. So, yeah, so we're not supporting the building, or selling it as a buildable lot, and we would like to buy it, integrate it with our lot, and not increase our FAR in any, in any way. So, thank you.
And the last one is Ole Snyder.
Do I have three minutes, I think? I'm Ole Snyder at 280 Torrey Pines Terrace. I'm right here. I think you got my correspondence. I just came in late, but I imagine everybody's talked about the ridiculousness of developing it with a standalone home. It's a planning commission. I think we're here about zoning, and I really appreciate the Van Ruins' efforts to work with the community, but what needs to be considered is owners' change, their good intentions. Their good intentions may not be the same intentions of a future owner. And the solution for everybody in this room is proper zoning. If it's zoned as open space or something that is zoned as unbuildable, we never face this in the future. Someone could buy it if they had a covenant on their property and store trailers and trashcans or anything else. They can develop it with weird landscaping. Integrating it with open space, I think, is the natural answer. It solves everybody's problem. It can be sold. It can be purchased by the Van Ruins. They can develop the landscaping or maintain the landscaping. They can accept the liability, and they can be assured that they have the buffer that I think everybody probably talked about. So, I just want to bring that up for consideration, that if it's, the zoning's not proper, the covenants can't address everything that is spoken about, even though I'm quite certain that they have great intentions. We don't know what's happening in the future. So, thanks for your careful consideration.
Thank you. Right, anyone else from the audience close a public hearing? Questions?
Kathy, a lot of the residents wanted open space. What would be the avenue they would take to cause that action to happen?
Well, it would be a zone change because it is now zoned R110. It would have to be initiated. Typically, zone changes are initiated by the property owner.
Okay. And this is the city, so how would this happen then? Would they petition the city for it or?
It would be a city council decision if they were to do a zone change. However, a zone change to open space would require a public benefit for the entire community. Right now, this property isn't a view shed between, you know, a public street, between two public streets or to the ocean. It's an open space between, or an undeveloped lot between two existing residences or one existing residence and one planned residence.
So, if they were going to do it, I mean, pursue open space, you would pursue that with city council?
But didn't that always, didn't that come up with the city council meetings that were held in May?
As rezoning to open space? No, that was not discussed that I remember.
But the council did hear the community at that time?
The community members brought it up, but the council did not look at it as their direction.
One other question. The issue of being a substandard lot, a small, buildable pad, we don't have any criteria for that, making decisions on that at all, do we?
Correct. We do not as planning commission.
At what point does a lot become unbuildable?
Well, a legal lot cannot be rendered unbuildable because then it no longer is a legal lot. There is no minimum square foot requirement for any house in town. We do have houses that are 600 square feet, 800 square feet throughout Delmar. There are some. So, there is no minimum size.
Do other municipalities institute a minimum size?
There have been some. They're usually very rural communities where you have lots of 20 acres, 40 acres, that sort of thing, and they'd have minimum house size. Not many that I know of.
Thank you.
May I comment on that? There might be a misunderstanding of what we're talking about right here. First of all, you can't spot zone. That's illegal, so you couldn't zone it, you know. And if you owned it, you know, so a private person owned it, decided to spot zone your lot and make it an open space, you can see how that wouldn't be legal. Normally, what's done is cities will vacate easements, give each property owner on either side half of it. They do that with alleys all the time. But that was up to the city council, and I'm looking here, you know, the city council decided to sell the property. So, all your arguments, which are, I think, persuasive, had to be made to the city council or maybe will be made to the city council, but I would think they had been made. All we're supposed to do is determine, is it a legal lot? You know, state of California says it's a legal lot, you can build on it.
Go back to that list.
So, I'm just saying that we don't really have any choice as a planning commission. It's a legal lot. It's in a residential area. It doesn't make any sense if you're planning the subdivision. You'll say, "We don't want a little lot like that in the middle of subdivision." And you look at it, and you can say, "That doesn't make any sense." But it exists, and therefore, it's lawful. But my question is, is there any appeal to the city council? Has this already been decided? It looks like they decided to sell it.
They decided to investigate selling it. They have not made the determination to sell it. They asked for an appraisal. They'd like to see what that comes back at, and they'll use your direction, and they will then make a decision.
Because I think as a matter of law, it's consistent. So, we're not the one you ought to be talking to. You know, I understand that it's set on the agenda. I think the city council's got to decide, do they want to sell it? Do they want to vacate it? You can't declare it open space, but you could buy it and make it open space. You know, you can do a lot of different things, but legally, you can't just come in and say, "I decided your lot ought to be open space." That just won't work. So, it just seems to me that the city council needs to make a decision on this, and I'm sure they will.
It is a council decision. You're absolutely right. And it is not an easement, by the way. This is not an easement.
Yeah.
I'm confused as to why we fit into the process and what we're being asked to determine relative to what our options are. It doesn't seem like we actually have any options while I--
Do you have that list that you showed that shows exactly the criteria?
Lonnie, I think we're state mandated--
Yes.
--to approve the zoning.
Okay. It's just part of a process that it goes to the planning commission to--
Right.
Is it consistent in a residential area?
Right.
It's legally consistent. It's a law.
Right. And it's legal.
What they ask is that the state code requires a discretionary body, of which the planning commission is, as opposed to staff, making that decision that it is in conformance with the, you are the keepers of the community plan and the zoning code as the discretionary body. And so, that is what state law requires, which is why we're here.
So, those are the points we'd look at for conformity for the law.
Yes.
Yes.
And the only points we'd look at.
Yes.
Seems like a difficult, I mean, it's a difficult thing to do because I agree with the residents that have come about just the common sense approach for what's ideal to the community in that area. But it seems like, is there a way for me to officially state or the planning commission to officially encourage the city council to look at?
I think that's a private, you would have to do that as a private citizen.
It's outside of the purview of the planning commission, so I would not recommend that you make that as part of your motion because that could be challenged. However, you as a citizen could always approach your council members with your feelings towards that.
Yeah, I would just say that it appears to me we're supposed to be, is it, we're supposed to determine is it consistent with the zoning? It is. It's a screwy-looking lot. It doesn't conform. It's a little different, but it's legally permissible. So, I, but I think your arguments are really good. If I lived next door, I'd say the same thing you'd say. And so, I would think that those arguments ought to be made to the city council. And they may carry the day, but we don't even have a choice. You know, we're just determining zoning issues. And legally, that's the way it is.
And we're not authorized to change the zone at all.
So, if we ruled, if we says, "No, it's not consistent," that wouldn't mean anything. You know, it really wouldn't make any difference. So, we, and it wouldn't be true. But I think you got a good case. I mean, I'm out of line saying this, really. It's not the question, but I just think if it were my property, I'd be arguing to the city council on why, you know, on different possibilities.
But that's not our--
But that's not my job, and I probably shouldn't have even said that.
So, is there any more discussion? Confusion, but?
Just a quick question. I wondered if Kathy could explain why the planning commission is in the process for this type of situation?
Could you go back to that process?
It's always the case that the proposal law you come forward if it's consistent with the zoning law, why is it placed, why is it legally placed before the planning commission?
Because zoning, or excuse me, Government Code Section 65402 requires that planning commission as a discretionary body makes that determination. So, it's not a staff determination. It is the discretionary body that makes the determination that is in conformance with the community plan.
I think if you were to look at it, like, if the area was unzoned or was zoned around it, you know, they're asking to come to us and saying, "All right, does the city have policy as instituted ordinances saying this is R110 zone, and you're going to sell it as R110?" And they're just coming to us saying, "Is this R110, and has the city done its due diligence?" And they have called this out in the community plan. They've mapped it. It's, you know, and it's all, I mean, I understand everybody's point, but--
You can't take a lot because it's different. And this happens all the time. You get lots that have funny, they're panhandles, or they have little topography issues because there's a bluff there. You can't take a lot and just spot zone it into something else. It's got to be consistent with everything around. You're not allowed to do that. And we're really not allowed to do much more than to say, "Yeah, it's residential. Yeah, it's a legal lot. It's consistent." That's all we're supposed to do. But your arguments are valid, I think, and they need to be made on what should the city do with this kind of a parcel?
Why would a pump site be zoned as residential?
All of our pump sites, actually, our water towers are zoned residential.
If you want to, why don't you come back up to the--
And reopen it?
Yeah, reopen it. We can have more discussion.
Bob Freed, 264 Tory Pines Terrace. Would it be possible for the planning commission to make the finding that they feel is appropriate and at the same time, based upon, say, something, based upon the input from the community, that the planning commission recommends that the city council review, something like that? At least it gives the sense that you found that there are valid points, and you are recommending that this be considered by the city council.
I think that's the question I asked, and I just told no.
If you, planning commission could do a separate motion and statement, and if you cared to vote on that as a body, what I recommended was, and that was before I heard different comments, that you do it individually if you are in agreement or you want to put forward a second motion. But I would do it as a separate action because it is advisory and it's outside of your purview as a commission, so--
You don't have the authority to do that.
I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
You just don't, you know. There's very little that we can do.
And this entire meeting's on record anyway.
The minutes can stay.
Yeah, that's the city council--
Could you come up, please? And this will be the last one, and then we have to close it.
Linda Depp is at 225 Tory Pines Terrace. And I have a whole packet from the time I got notices. The first notice I received about this was five, the 2nd of May, for a meeting that was on, was supposed to be on 5/20, and several notices and so forth. So, my question is, why was there never any notice about, you know, neighbors giving input to the city council? It was only the planning department. All these notices are for planning department meetings. So, that's, you know, that's my question. Why wouldn't the neighborhood have had an opportunity to give input way back when the city council was discussing it?
You weren't notified of the May, March 18th meeting of the city council. You didn't attend that?
I didn't get any notice.
I believe it was the May 20th meeting was the city council meeting.
The earliest one I have is that I have, my note says on the envelope, "5/2."
Yeah, that's May 2nd.
May 2nd, right.
So, that's that meeting?
Oh, I see.
No? And I came to that meeting, and it got, you know, it was canceled.
I get it. Okay. I was wrong.
So, my question, but it was a planning department meeting, not a city council meeting.
I don't have an answer to that.
So, that's my question.
My record showed that May 20th was the council meeting. I could look up on my calendar to confirm that.
I'll open it up and look at, look at it.
But the public would have been notified of that meeting, same as they are of mine. There wouldn't have been a difference--
Correct. There was a notice--
--the agenda on a city council meeting vis-à-vis the agenda.
The return, the return address on our noticing envelopes, I believe, might say "planning," but it is a city council meeting.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Testimony.
The residents still can address city council on this issue.
Absolutely.
At any time, bring it up to their--
Absolutely.
Talk to the city council members and address those issues.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, the question before us is, does it conform to Government Code Section 65402?
You have a resolution in the, in your packet. It's in Exhibit A, which--
Plan Commission 14.
Okay. So, does someone want to make a motion?
I motion for approval of PC 14 for conformity of the law.
Second?
I'll second.
Opposed? Passes.
Okay. Would you want me to read the resolution title just into the record?
Yes, please.
A resolution of the planning commission determining that the sale of surplus vacant property, public property located on Hidden Pines Road in the city of Delmar and specifically identified as Assessor Parcel Number APN 30102436 for use as low-density residential development is in conformance with the Delmar community plan's general plan.
Thank you. Are we going to discuss item two today?
No. Item two has been continued to your February meeting.
So, that's it tonight, correct?
That is the--
Another motion?
I move the chair.
Second?
Yeah.
Lonnie, second.
Lonnie, second.
Yeah.